Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, as posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the pleasure of the leaders.
The pleasure of the leaders to comply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the simple agenda on the, for the caucus is the Holtek Quarterly Update.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here, and I'd like to give you a quarterly update on our progress for Holtek and decommissioning West Creek. First, I'll go with safety. Our performance this year has been good, I'd say very good. We've had two first aids in this year so far. First was an individual stepping in a popple and spraining their leg and back. They were administered aspirin, and that's why it's considered a first aid. The second was an individual stepping on a curb and re-injuring their, uh, preceding injury that they already had. They were given an ice pack, and that's why it's a first aid. So otherwise, even though of work going on and the destruction work we're doing, it's been very good for safety performance. For schedule performance, to date, we've removed about fifty-eight structures from the site. That amounts to about twenty million pounds of waste, approximately twenty million pounds of waste. And I'm happy to say twenty-five percent of that has been recycled, reused, and repurposed. That's one thing that we're focusing on that other companies do not. They're into a rip-and-shift method where they dispose of everything on the site, and we're trying to recycle and repurpose as much as we can. As we get into the larger structures, reactor building, turbine building, we'll increase that number. I expect that number to get up to forty percent. So that's moving along well. With the schedule, we've completed our vessel internal segmentation, our reactor vessel internals. Those are all removed, and we now have an empty vessel, just water, which we're cleaning up. From a standpoint of the schedule itself, we're right on target. As the committee probably knows, we did release a financial insurance report to the NRC and assuring them that we do have enough funds to complete the project on schedule. One of the things that we did change in the schedule is our reactor vessel segmentation. We moved that out by four years, but it stays under the project domain for the 2030 completion. So everything will be completed as predicted and as scheduled. And from a community outreach standpoint, I'll just talk about one. We had a food drive, and we decided to do that quarterly, support the Lacey Pugh Food Bank. The other thing is we are participating on the steering committee, repurposing the site and other properties in Lacey. We're pleased to do that, happy to do that. And the third is we'll be presenting the township with $5,000 to support our works as a donation to the city. So thank you very much. Any questions?
What were your thoughts on the committee?
On the committee?
Yeah.
I think it's great, and I think it is stirring up interest. I'm getting a lot of calls personally in regards to potential repurposing of our site.
Right.
Whether it be solar, battery storage, hydrogen production, those are all calls that I'm fielding about bringing it to the town. And it's a perfect place to bring up on the steering committee.
Right.
And we're not discounting anything, and we're looking at building a green energy park. And eliminate a green energy park.
Oh, okay.
That would bring in multiple sources of infrastructure onto the site and green energy.
Because you and I did talk about the financial disclosure, and the Asbury Park Press called me. I don't forget what time in the morning it was, and I was like, I know nothing about it. And, but it was, but 2030 was the original date.
That's right.
And you're not going to miss that date.
We're not going to miss that date.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Why don't we get a little photo op here with our check there, and let you run down?
Well, step.
Should be made up to Tim McDonald.
Thank you, sir.
And as always, if you have any questions, just give me a call anytime and if anything you need.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no add-ons. Anybody else have any add-ons for caucus?
No.
You can take a motion to adjourn caucus then?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, as posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for, salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
The pleasure of the leaders to comply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Second reading of ordinance 2023-11, establishing a cap bank.
In accordance with Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 48:45.14. This is part of the process with regards to the municipal budget process. It's an annual resolution, uh, ordinance that we do. Second reading, we open the floor.
Any comments on the floor?
Seeing that motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-149, authorizing the budget to be read by title only.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the budget, uh, the reading of the budget by title only. So this is for the 2023 municipal budget, which was introduced at a meeting on March 23rd. We're doing general appropriations in the amount of $39,147,112.52. The reserve for uncollected taxes is in the amount of $1,450,850.48. Total general appropriations is $40,597,963, less the anticipated revenues of $20,284,727. The amount to be raised for support of the municipal budget is $20,313,236. Can we have a motion on this resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Now we need to open the floor for public comment on the municipal budget.
Anybody have any comments on the municipal budget? Come on down.
Those who budgeted had.
Come on down. Please state your name and your name only for the record.
Stephen Barle, Forkett River, New Jersey.
Okay.
Does the budget include anything regarding the new municipal complex?
No, it does not.
Okay. My questions, and I want to do a statement when appropriate, on the proposal for this new municipal complex. So when would I do that? Now, or you want me to wait?
During normal public comments, this is only on the municipal budget right now.
Okay, I'll be back off.
Anybody else have any comments on the budget?
Seeing that motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Second.
You don't do that after, next resolution.
Next resolution. Resolution 2023-150, adopting the municipal budget.
Okay, Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, adopting the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year 2023. So a motion on the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second, excuse me, pardon me. Second reading of ordinance 2023-12, amending Chapter 185 entitled Flood Hazard Areas.
In accordance with Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 185 entitled Flood Hazard Areas so as to create Article, what's that, 18 entitled fees. This is to add some fees with related to properties in the flood areas. It's a major flood plain development permit application, minor flood plain development permit application, final flood review, elevation certificate review for resales, revised application for flood plain letter for substantial damage slash improvement, and map determination letter for flood plains. This is associating the fees with those.
Second reading opens up to the public.
Seeing that motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-151, urging swift passage of S330, which restores the tax, restores energy tax receipts.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, urging swift passage of S330, which restores energy tax receipts. These are the tax receipts that the Township of Lacey receives related to the nuclear power plant. We get about $11.1 million. Last year, they had thrown us another $579,000 towards that. But the township over the last thirty years has been short quite a few million dollars. We should be getting about $18 million more dollars than we normally do. And all the towns in the state of New Jersey are also suffering from the same thing. So we, and there has been legislation that has been back and forth and around quite some time, and we're looking to get our fair share of the money that we're entitled to instead of the state taking the money for themselves first and then passing the rest on. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-152, authorizing the appointment of a special conflict prosecutor.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Kelsey McGuckin Anthony, Martin Buckley, Timothy McNichols, Gregory McGuckin, and Patrick Varga of the firm of Dasty Murphy, McGuckin, Yulaki, Casaurus, and Connors as special conflict prosecutors for the Township of Lacey. Our normal conflict prosecutor has a conflict, so I needed to hire a special conflict prosecutor for some cases before the municipal court. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-153, authorizing the execution of the shared service agreement with the borough of Tuckerton.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a Uniform Shared Services Act Agreement under NJSA 48:65-1 at SEC with the Borough of Tuckerton for tax assessor services. Our tax assessor assists with Tuckerton's besides ours. He, we share him one day a week with them, and they pay a fee for that.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-154, awarding a contract under the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Nick's Lex Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide for a housing rehabilitation program. This is for 111 Jones Road. The amount of work is $20,470.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-155, awarding a contract under the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Unlimited Builders Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program, and this is for 1511 Ariant Road in the amount of $25,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-156, awarding a contract under the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Unlimited Builders Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant Program to provide a housing rehabilitation program for 927 Center Street in the amount of $21,350.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-157, awarding a contract under the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Nick's Lex Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program for 1325 Silvania Place in the amount of $18,575.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-158, awarding a contract under the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Unlimited Builders Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program for 1008 East Panama Court in the amount of $17,850.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-159, authorizing the cancellation of an outstanding check.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing cancellation of old outstanding checks from the Lacey Township Tax Lean Premium Account. There is ten checks being canceled for a total amount of $330.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-160, refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2023-161, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $3,743,188.15.
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Excuse me. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes from April 13th, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes from April 13th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for PODS Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? We'll start with Deputy Mayor Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. In case anybody isn't aware or hasn't noticed, we've put flashing speed limit signs on Lake Barnegat Drive in both directions. That road's, you know, been a frequent source of complaints for as long as I've been on the committee, so hopefully this will help people be aware of their speed limit and hopefully slow down a little bit. And the other thing I wanted to mention, right around, I think it was last weekend, the weekend before, around Earth Day, the Fork River Mountain Coalition holds a cleanup day on Fork River Mountain. And I just want to thank the volunteers, Carrie Jennings in particular, who's been running it for, you know, thirty years now. And I want to make note that they picked up seventeen tons of garbage this year, and over the past thirty years, they picked up seven hundred and fifty tons. And as much as we appreciate those volunteers doing that, I'm going to comment on the other side of it, and that's the people that are, you know, completely disrespecting the, you know, our township, and it's just a complete lack of respect for, for the environment and other people's time. And, you know, hopefully they're, you know, by mentioning this stuff and by them hosting that Earth Day, the people, you know, more aware of what they're doing. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Community Woman Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got to follow up on that. I had my first experience of going out to the Fork River Mountain. I've never been there. It was quite the adventure to me anyway, as a girl from the city, you know, walking all the way out there was absolutely beautiful. But along the way, we did see a lot of this trash, and it's sad that that's where people will go and do their dumping, and it's really very sad that we then have to have all these volunteers go out there and take care of all of that mess. That's one thing. I wanted to thank the DPW for our parks that are just phenomenal. People, this weekend, we were very busy with opening days for both our girls softball, our boys Little League, Boys and Girls Little League, and also our flag football opened up on Sunday. Was that all three of them? And you know what? You can say whatever you want, but boy, what a town we are. Honestly, we should be so proud of what we have here in this town because the amount of people using our parks, being out there with their children, it, it's really, it's an experience to just stand. I mean, my children are grown, so now I go back and I watch all these other kids, and it's a wonderful experience. And I'm, I'm just proud to be a part of it, to be very honest with you. On another note, just that tomorrow is the senior luncheon that our Heather Scannion and Municipal Alliance run. That's tomorrow, 7:30, down at our new community hall there. And other than that, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Committee Men Dykoff?
No comments this evening, Mayor.
What are you, Jet Li from another?
Still, pretty much.
Committee Men Curatolo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to dovetail with some of the other comments that have been said already, the, uh, what rings true was what Committee Woman Juliana has said. How many people came up to us during the girls softball first pitch and the boys Little League first pitch and talked or commented about the parks, the chalk lines, the way the grass was, people from all around the state. And they say, well, our fields don't look like this. And I mean, they didn't mean anything by it as a slight to their town, but that's what we have over here. When you talk to people universally, they'll say one of the reasons we're here is because of our parks. And that's because of our DPW, so all of the services that were there on those, that day. It was a beautiful day, it was a great first day. Police officers were there, emergency service folks were there, DPWs there, the parents who sacrifice all year for those kids to play those games. It was just a little piece of, like a Norman Rockwell painting come to life, it was great. Tomorrow again, Municipal Alliance. Our alliance gets more, and I'm at the county, so I used to be contributing to the reports, I'm not anymore, I'm in a different department, but our alliance has more volunteers than towns two and three times our size. So it says a lot about the volunteers and the parents, schools, everybody's tied in, recreation, another great department. So thanks to everybody. And to our good friends from Holtek who gave another ten grand so that we could get away to fireworks. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to table mine because I have to.
I forgot I had to add on a resolution, I apologize. It's Resolution 163, it's a resolution of Township Lacey County, Boston, New Jersey, awarding a contract to H.A. DeHart &amp; Son Incorporated for the purchase of a 2023 A7 tornado sweeper unit. It's $372,737. Hopefully we'll see it within two years.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
That's all I have to add, I apologize.
No problem. And I'll, let me give my comments. I do want to talk about the Fork River Mountain and the cleanup there. Understand this, a lot of it isn't the Lacey residents. It's the guys out there with the three-wheelers and the four-wheelers out there. They shouldn't even be out there to begin with unless they have owner permission from the owners to be out there. And they just make a mess up. And let me just remind people, if you're out there and you don't have permission, you get hurt out there, you're getting charged. You're going to get charged for, get our firemen or our EMS out there. It's not easy, usually happens at night, and it's very difficult, and you're going to get charged. That's all I have about that. I also want to talk about, now I don't know the amounts, I didn't get the numbers yet, but Eno's Pond from the county is getting a special needs playground. Okay, they're redoing the whole thing, that came down, I want to say Monday or Tuesday of this week. The amount, how much they're spending, I do not know, but I'm sure it's going to be significant. And that's, that's great for Lacey Township. And there's also an award for Hebrew Park, the amount, I'm not sure.
Sixty.
Sixty, we got sixty thousand, we got $60,000 to help redo the, uh,
Pavilion.
The what?
The pavilion area.
The pavilion area and so forth in, in Hebrew Park. So that's, so that's all, all good things. Activities, yeah. Couldn't make the softball, unfortunately, I had another prior commitment, but I was at the softball and the flag football. And, you know, I, I said it there and I'll say it here, it's, it's not whether they win or lose, it's the facial expressions that these kids have when they come off any field, and they're smiling. And, you know, when things don't go their way, they got the frowns going. And that's what I remember from my kids. My boys are now older, much older, and they had the great memories of all of that. And we just got to keep that going. And I will tell you this, the pandemic hurt, the pandemic hurt those activities, no question about it. But I'm glad to see it come back. Flag football first year's got 272 kids involved in it. That's phenomenal, okay? Baseball's coming back a little bit, and we've got the lacrosse going on, we got, and I even, I said, I said to Rob Kraska, our DPW, he's down there for baseball, I said, I said, can our fields handle all this? And he just said, yeah, we'll make it happen. So that's the commitment the township will make, to make sure that we have the best fields for our kids, that they're the safest fields we can possibly provide. And I want to thank the parents and the coaches who do all of this, because without them, this is not possible. And that's, that's all I have. So let me open this up to the public. Does the public have any comment? Well, I'll get to you. Come on, Kevin.
Kevin's playing Fork River. All the years you lived here, Peggy Sue, you've never been to the top of the mountain?
Never invited her, Kevin.
She didn't hang out when we were kids, by the way. I mean, honestly, I mean, as Timmy said, you know, no one's supposed to be out in the woods, but when we were kids, that's where we went.
Same with, same with me with the, with the woods around where I grew up. We weren't supposed to be in there, but guess what? We were there anyhow.
Yeah. Community Hall update, any?
It's, it's listed, in fact, I have a showing tomorrow. Don't know with who, it's a real estate broker coming in, so I have to show.
This thing's been on almost two months, it's been listed?
Yeah, something like that, yeah, so I have a showing tomorrow.
This the first bike you have on?
Yeah, this is for first bike, yeah.
Wow.
We have the right of first refusal no matter, you know, what it is, so.
Okay. Town Docs?
They're renting out for the season, so.
Not talking to the neighbor?
Um, they're, well, it's not as easy as talking to the neighbor because there's really a street that traverses between the neighbor and us.
Doesn't come into play as.
No, it's not, it's not truly adjoining property owner, so you'd have to put it out for a public auction. Yeah, so we're contemplating whether or not we're going to do that.
Last meeting, Steve, you had mentioned you met with the state or somebody about the financing or the affordability of your building. What, what can we actually afford? I mean, I built a garage, detached garage in my house, and I didn't start the project until I knew what I could afford to build. And I'm sure the same thing is here. So what's that number that the township can afford, that top number? What's, what's?
We don't know yet, we didn't do, we didn't get that for yet. We don't even have the footprint dialed out yet.
There's gotta be a number that you say you can afford. You don't do a project, you know, say it's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty million. There's gotta be a number that you guys can go up to.
I mean, again, it depends on, it strictly comes down to how you're financing, like a mortgage. It's whether, what's the mortgage payment?
Well, just so happens that the CFO is here, and what can we afford?
That's not how this type of project and scope and scale of project is going to work. Unfortunately, they can't, I can't say, "Oh, we can afford twenty million, you gotta build twenty million." First, they're doing all of this legwork to try to find out what exactly, you know, about speeds. I think that's probably-
So, again, here's a huge difference between something that's a hundred thousand square feet or something that's twenty thousand square feet. How, I mean, how would you like me to quote your number?
I don't know, why are we still around a fifty-five thousand square feet? 'Cause that was quoted.
We don't, we don't know, we don't know. We've been working on that this week quite heavily, so. And we're doing some programming to determine the square footage. We've met with all the department heads this week to determine, walk through all of their offices, all of their buildings, to determine their flow and what they need, and projecting out what do you, where do you think you'll be in ten years, fifteen years, twenty-five years with manpower and staffing and everything. So that's being all put into a program, as they call it, and the square footage and everything to determine, do we need fifty-five thousand, maybe we only need forty thousand?
Uh, 'cause today's Asbury Park Press, Asbury Park is building a new firehouse. Thirty-one thousand eight hundred square feet, and you're looking at eighteen million dollars.
It's a good price.
Uh, but, yeah, but it's mostly, you know, the whole bottom's gonna be trucking.
It's a little bit different than-
It's gonna be living quarters.
Right, it's a little different than what, yeah, open space, right?
It's gonna be somewhere, just roughly the square footage per, you know, how much per square foot. Also, if you met, you read off an ordinance about meeting with Johnson Controls last meeting also, right? There were some statements made at the Rotary Club meeting last Thursday about how you're gonna see trees coming down this summer over there.
You very well could, we can start prepping the site.
So it's gonna happen that fast?
If we decide to go forward, yeah.
But, and yet you still don't know what you can afford?
Well, we anticipate wrapping that up in the next thirty, forty days.
What you can afford?
Well, they're gonna come back to us with a design, and we're gonna say, okay, what's the cost of that design? And we're gonna say, wait a minute, that's way out of range. We'll start chiseling it down, chiseling it down, chiseling it down till we get to where we're comfortable with the number.
I mean, summer's only a month and a half away, so you're gonna be not-
Like I said at the Republican Club meeting, Steve may have one number, I may have a number, Pete and Mark may have different numbers. It is, I'm sorry, and I guess Sue may have a different number too, so we'll have to get together.
I can't reiterate enough that unless it gets voted on here, it doesn't matter. So I don't care what you heard at Rotary Club, I really don't, I couldn't care less. I wasn't at the meeting, whatever, whatever gets said, I could go, I could go after this meeting and talk to everybody in the public and say whatever I wanna say, off the record, doesn't mean anything. It's, unless it gets voted on here.
Well, also statements were made that people are working in the hallways in the buildings, which that's not true.
There is truth to that, and they put up a mobile wall in the police department, so they're walking, working in the hallways, and they have been for years there.
Really?
Yes, they have, two of the secretaries.
Two secretaries.
That was part of the hallway.
So that's okay with the fire, Division of Fire Safety?
Well, that's, that's not the point though, this is our whole problem, we are-
I did it, the police station's way too small.
Right, right, right.
I a hundred percent agree that they are way too small. And they should be way bigger, and they're still way under staff, but that's a whole other issue. Okay, that's it?
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Also, that the employees were the main, were the only reason that the taxes went up, is that true?
The employees?
The health insurance.
No, no, not at all. Health insurance is one of them in there, but, yeah, not at all.
But that was mentioned at the meeting also.
It's a comment.
No, Kevin, I was the one who spoke at the meeting, and health insurance did go up, but it wasn't because of the employees. And I read, I read off exactly how much salaries are in the entire budget, and all the new hires that we're doing in the police department and so on and so forth. I know what I said, and I did not blame it on the employees.
To be clear, though, our, our budget went up from last year to this year approximately 3.3 million. Of that, one million was salary, so out of the three million increase, one million was wage increase, another million was health increase, and another 230 was pension increase. So you could do the math from there. So I'm not, it's not blaming the employee.
Twenty-four percent from the state was the real kicker right there.
So nobody's blaming the employees, but the reality is, our budget is, is driven, your taxes are driven almost primarily from payroll.
Oh, listen, I, I get it, and yet the taxes only went up, what, on an average household?
A three-hundred thousand dollar house, it was like fifteen hundred dollars a year, which was like twelve dollars and something a month.
Yeah, so, less than a dollar a day.
Yeah, right.
So can't really-
Good deal.
Oh, listen.
Wait, yeah.
We're not saying you are, we're just saying that people don't-
The problem is, people don't look at their tax bill.
The municipal, I will, I will stand on our record and for the last thirty years, the township, the municipal township has been run very well in terms of taxes. But that's not what all these people pay, they pay a lot else, a lot more things in taxes. So when they complain about taxes, I don't think in general they're complaining about the municipal rate. They're complaining about taxes.
And they get the total tax bill, and that's when you hear them complain, because they pay the, they're getting the check.
We collect, we collect the money.
But, yeah, the counties were almost, the county and the school board.
Schools, the majority.
Majority, yeah. And then the county's next, and then we're last.
And then you have the library.
Small piece of coal.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? I saw, come on downstairs.
Steve Borrell, Forkett River, New Jersey. Just a comment on what Kevin's saying. Apparently, there's a lot of stuff being leaked out about trees coming down, people working in hallways. It's a done deal, it's gonna be fifty million. You know, there's a lot of stuff being floated out there, and it ain't coming from the public, it's coming from the officials. So even when I make my statement, some of the things I'm gonna say is what's going around, because I don't believe that there's been true transparency with this proposal by the township. So, I come here tonight to explain my opposition for the proposal to build a new municipal complex paid for by Lacey taxpayers. In addition, I believe I speak for other Lacey Township taxpayers, including seniors on fixed incomes, taxpayers raising families, less fortunate taxpayers who live paycheck to paycheck, and other taxpayers who know that this is just a bad idea. I believe that many taxpayers are unaware of the financial mountain that is ready to be dropped on them. Dropped on them without an opportunity to vote on whether they want this financial burden or not. That this township committee plans to bypass the voters and unilaterally approve its construction and will be paying for it for the next thirty years. Buildings of this new complex is in accordance with the public-private partnership law passed in 2018 by Governor Murphy. This law has many regulations to include, but not limited to, sufficient public interest to build the new complex, public notifications, town hall meetings, financial transparency, competitive bidding, and most of all, this mayor and township committee must prove that this construction benefits the public who are in the most part taxpaying families of Lacey Township. One might find it hard to believe that this gigantic cost of this complex truly benefits the taxpaying public. Although this partnership has been around for five years, their website states that no New Jersey municipality has applied or been approved to partake in it. Why? I will discuss this partnership and what it means to Lacey taxpayers later in my statement. I also have a number of questions for the mayor and the township committee, who we elected to lead and govern Lacey Township. When I first heard of this proposal and read about it on the patch, I thought, why now? What's so wrong with our current municipal building that it can't be repaired for a fraction of what it would cost in today's economy to build a whole new complex? Rising inflation that has no end in sight, highest interest rates in years, fuel and energy that continues to rise, building material that has doubled in price, lost power plant tax money, state aid to Lacey school districts evaporating, and workers' 401K and savings for their retirement disappearing, and on and on. There are many among us who are struggling and sacrificing to make ends meet, because just about everything Lacey taxpayers need to survive continue to rise in price every day, every week, every month, every year, with no end in sight. The future of our school district financing, financing is one of the scariest problems, even though I did read something on the patch that we are getting money back. I'm not sure which is newer. Because what's on, I believe, the Lacey website is that the estimate for twenty-four and twenty-five currently estimated to suffer a two million dollar reduction. What does this mean to taxpayers? That might have changed, I'm not sure. But the elephant in the room is the new municipal complex, which the taxpayers will have to finance. This proposal requires selling our current municipal building at a price yet to be discussed and disclosed by the mayor and the township committee. What's it worth? Who would buy it? What would it be used for? What does it cost to repair it? When will the mayor and the township committee discuss and provide written estimates of these costs? I know I've been asking for them and was directed to see them at our current municipal building, this building. I made three separate visits and saw nothing. I was told the written estimates are at the Township Engineers Building and unavailable for me to see on the first two visits. On the third visit, I was told they're at another Engineers Building to determine its status by developing a feasibility report, and that these written estimates were unavailable to me. Is the township telling us that there's but one copy of these estimates? It appears so. Recently, I asked the mayor what it would cost to repair the current building, and he said he didn't know. So I researched the patch on the internet and discovered that the clerk administrator for the township stated last year that the repair cost would be twenty-five million dollars. Hard to believe, let's see it in writing. Now to the public-private partnership law of 2018 that the township is buying into. I ran across disadvantages of this law on the internet. Number one, a private company builds, holds the mortgage, and maintains the complex using private workers in lieu of township employees who currently maintain our municipal complex. So is it the intention of the mayor and the township committee to replace union municipal workers with private subcontractors? It appears that way. Doesn't this action violate union rules about subcontracting? I know the union I belong to did not allow such replacement of union workers, whether it was in a current building or a future one. The internet also states, "The risk of the private company to build the new complex within the time limits and mortgaging the building, et cetera, reasonably expects to be compensated for accepting these risks. This will increase local government costs and in turn raise taxes." From the internet, it also states, "Public-private partnerships are used to conceal public borrowing while providing long-term state profit guarantees for the private company paid for by the taxpayer." Also from the internet, it states, "Another risk factor is how inflation will adversely affect the complex outcome to the detriment of the township taxpayers." The internet also states, "Public-private partnerships are long-term, complicated, and comparatively inflexible." From the internet, it also states, "The thirty-year maintenance fees are subject to inflation and will continue to rise, also to the detriment of the Lacey taxpayers." It almost sounds like a timeshare maintenance contract. I now ask the mayor and the township committee, "How is this public-private partnership beneficial to the taxpaying public? How high is the interest rates? Who owns the land this complex is gonna be built on? How much is the monthly maintenance fees? How many subcontractors will maintain the complex? What happens to the township workers who were replaced with private subcontractors? How much will this complex cost over the thirty-year period in total? Who will pay for it? How much is our current municipal building complex worth? Who would buy it? What would it be used for? How much tax payer money has been set aside for this new complex? Why hasn't other municipalities invested in this PPP arrangement? Will the building of this complex be voted on by the public? These are all questions I put together through myself, my family. We own five, six houses in Forkett River. We feel we pay enough in taxes. We feel that this new municipal complex does not benefit the public. It might benefit the workers that work in it, but not the public. Put in addition on the police station, and let's see what's wrong with this building. Why can't I have written estimates that authenticate a twenty-five million dollar repair?
The same reason I told you at the Republican Club, we don't have it yet.
It's still being worked on.
Okay.
They've been trying to investigate-
This is the mayor talking, please.
I've told you that several times, and I said to you, as soon as we-
Then you don't know.
As soon as we get it, we will digest it, the committee will digest it, and then we'll publish it. We're not gonna, we're not putting anything-
It goes beyond that, Mr. Mayor. You gotta have public hearings, you gotta read that law, do you, have you read the-
We did have a public hearing on it.
When?
Back in the fall.
Did you disclose numbers?
No.
You just told the people. Well, financial transparency, financial transparency means financial transparency. Not just let the, let the public know that this is what we're gonna do. You're already gonna make the deal, all between you all, and then spring it on us in the future. And guys like me are gonna file protests with the state of New Jersey that you're violating the law by not disclosing and being transparent. And that's the God's honest truth. Tell me I'm lying. Tell me I'm lying.
About what?
What I just said.
You're entitled to file the complaint, that's fine, but we've been transparent.
Why should I have to?
Wait.
Why can't the discussion about repairing this building be a subject at this meeting?
What do you want me to show you, that I don't, I can't have it? We don't have it to show you.
How would you know it's twenty-five million dollars now?
It was in a ballpark estimate.
Ballpark estimate?
Yes.
So now we're building a fifty to probably seventy-five million dollar new municipal complex based upon a ballpark estimate?
No, no.
Are you building it or not?
We don't know yet.
When are you gonna know?
I just said to Kevin, probably thirty to sixty days.
I'm asking Kevin, I'm asking the mayor, you're in charge of this town.
You were sitting right back there, and Kevin asked a question, and I answered it. I said, thirty to sixty days.
Thirty, sixty days, you're gonna know.
Thirty to sixty days.
And we're gonna have public, we're gonna be informed, and we're gonna have a meeting on this.
We'll notify the public, yes.
Okay, and who, is it gonna be voted on, or a unilateral decision? Oh, we don't vote on it. So we're gonna pay for something that six people vote on?
Five people.
Five. Five people are gonna determine how much taxes we pay.
That's how it works.
That's how it works.
Not with something like this.
We just did the budget, and five people voted for it.
Okay.
Which is how, which is what you pay your taxes on.
But this is with this public-private partnership. There's rules, it's a law.
And that's why we have a law, a law firm handling that's on-
The law is being followed.
What's that?
The law is being followed.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. When am I gonna get the written estimates? When are we gonna have the financial transparency?
What, as soon as we put, if, if we decide to go forward, we put the whole deal together, it'll be transparent.
You see, you're already deciding to go forward.
No, I didn't, I said if, if, if we decide to go forward. Because if we don't, we still gotta add on to the police station, okay? And we gotta add on to this, because we've outgrown it.
You gotta add on to this building?
Yes, yes, we do. We've outgrown it.
If I may, may, the only thing I'd like to just jump in and say, couple things. One thing is, is you were quoting everything from the internet, and I don't know about you, but I don't-
Well, I get no information, and I ask you people, and no one knows nothing.
Okay, but I just-
But, would you let her speak? Would you let her speak?
Let us speak, let us speak.
So what else am I gonna go? I go to, I go to the private partner, a private public partnership websites. And then I go to Lacey websites, they're the only two websites I go to. Because I can't get no questions, I come up here three times.
Okay.
Three times, because you guys told me to come up here.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Let me ask you a question.
I got a song and a dance, they got one copy.
Let me tell you something, at the last meeting we had with the financial, with the state, they have turned down every one.
Yes.
That's a fact.
And no one has-
Let me finish, every application for the P3 program has been turned down by the state.
So why are we spending money with engineers when we're probably gonna get turned down?
We don't, we don't, we don't think we will.
Did you analyze why they got turned down?
Yes, we know why, we know why. Because one was a splash, one was a splash park. They wanted, for the kids, they wanted like ten million dollars for a splash.
What about a legitimate one?
Some of the, there hasn't been a legitimate one yet, that's what we're trying to say, that's what I'm trying to say. There hasn't been a legitimate one. They, they want, you know, tenderies for a splash park and-
Lot of recreation.
Lot of recreation stuff, and they're not gonna do that for recreation, it's not worth the investment, the time that state's gotta put into it.
Okay, so, in the next thirty, sixty days, you're gonna know the final number on what this is gonna cost us.
Well, no, no, we're gonna have the notice of what it's gonna cost to redo this. And then we go and make the decision as to whether it's worth to put the money into this and the police, and the police station, okay?
And you said you'll discuss all this at the meeting.
Yeah, why wouldn't we?
I don't know.
Well, you, you keep accusing us of being-
Well, I know, because I hear, I hear a lot of stuff.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm around, I'm retired, I've been living in Forkett River since 1962. I'm a member of the Historical Society, and I know a lot of people, and they're all asking me questions.
May I, may I? Sure.
Yes.
So, okay, you've been here since 1962. So you, what you should have done in 1962, or, well, you were probably a kid then, but since that time, you should have been coming to the Township Committee meetings and telling these people to not build their buildings on our prime commercial property. We should have been collecting property, uh-uh, listen, let me finish. We should have been collecting property, we've been missing property taxes now for seventy years, and we should have been collecting property taxes on this building and the community hall.
So now you're gonna make up for it on us?
I'm making up on anything, you cost me, you put this building here.
I talked to you for a long time the other day.
And I, and I, my, my premise is that we should-
And you kept bringing up, oh, this is, uh, 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 what you call, commercial property.
Yes, it's our last commercial property left, we only have Route Nine on Lacey Road.
Taxes would be made on this commercial property?
Depends on what's built here.
Oh, they're gonna knock this building down?
I would hope so, I would hope so, one day this building is knocked down, yes. I pay, don't forget, I pay taxes here too, and I have, I have five houses as well. So, so, yeah, so I'm, so if you think I wanna double my taxes, you're sorely mistaken.
Right. That's what I just wanna say to you, I feel like I-
I don't care, no, I don't care what you said. Triple them, I don't wanna pay any more than I have to. As a matter of fact, my reputation up here is as a penny pincher. I don't like spending, spending money on, did you see the F-150 I drive around this town with? It's from 2008, it leaks transmission fluid, I can't afford a new F-150.
I'd just like to say one thing before anybody else says me, excuse me one second. I'd like to say that I don't like that you come up here and make it feel like we're against you, or we're doing something illegal, or something wrong. We're up here because we were voting, I'm speaking-
Would you let her finish? Would you let her finish?
I'm speaking, if I could, please.
Would you let her finish?
Say it again.
I'll say it again, let her finish.
We are here because we were voted in. We are here to try to make decisions to help our town. We have to look at the future. We can't live in 1962. We have to move forward and make decisions to build for the future. You'll be gone, I'll be gone, but we need to know that this building will not be standing for our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren. We need to make sure, we've set it into motion, that we have stuff in this town built to take on for the rest of that time when we're gone. You think I want to spend my, I own three houses in this town too. I don't wanna have to do it either. But it is what it is. It's what we have to do, and we're working together hard to try to figure out the best way to do this. This isn't a joke, this isn't like a plan behind your back. That's how you're acting. You come up here and yelling at us like we're making decisions without your opinion. Well, we opened it up to the floor, and did anybody come in here and say anything? No, they didn't.
Where?
Like, other than Kevin Flynn, other than that man in the corner. He's the only one that came out and had anything to say. We got a whole big town here, and you don't see anybody come out and say anything until it's-
They don't know.
All of a sudden, oh, they don't know, come on, they don't know.
I have a question for you, Steve, I have a question.
Go out there and ask them, "Do you know about this new municipal?" Everyone I ask pretty much don't know.
Okay, I have a question for you. One of, one of your visits-
What is my business?
No, no, one of your visits to this complex, right? You went into the clerk's office.
I didn't go into the office.
Well, you were standing outside in the hallway.
In the hallway.
Okay? And you told our clerks that you know who's buying this piece of property.
No, I didn't, I, I didn't say that. There's rumors that are going around. It's not even for sale yet.
We haven't even put this up for sale yet. We may never put it up for sale yet.
That's gonna stop people from talking.
But why would you say anything close to that? It was not even for sale.
I didn't say that, that I know who's buying it. I said, I might have said, "There's people" that told me that someone might be interested in it.
Wow, semantics.
Semantics.
Well, whatever.
Thank you.
And I'm entitled to say that anyway. Why, break the law or something?
Well, if you know somebody's gonna buy it, please let us know, and maybe we'll sit down and start talking to them.
I'll be back up on this speaker the next time you guys have something to do with it. And Mr. Connors, you're the attorney, that makes sure they go by the law, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. It's gotta be read over.
Any other comments in the public? Yes, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
To use Lacy Township. I just following up on, when I was up here last, last month, just some of the things, like, the railroad, the rail, right of road, you know, the rail crossing, the rail trail.
Yeah.
Lake Shore Drive, south. The lights weren't working, but they're fixed. I know that you called them, and they called me a week later, actually. I actually was driving down there, and the lights were flashing. I'm like, oh, that's nice, I saw a father with his two little girls waiting across the road. Lights are flashing, and then cars just keep coming anyway.
Yes, they do, don't they?
You know, there's nothing, nothing you can do about that. The other thing I talked about was the plastic bags, you know those produce bags and things like that? But that's not just them, there's a lot of things that are wrapped in plastic. Even fruit, but tomatoes, they wrap them in plastic and everything. And I followed up on, because Walmart and ShopRite used to have those bins to put them in. And I followed up with Walmart, I got in touch with their corporate office and stuff. They still have those bins in Howell and in Hamilton in their Walmarts. And why they don't have it here, I don't know. I don't know if they're individually owned or something like that, or, it's just a strange thing. I actually called Wakefern, that's which is the mother company sort of for ShopRite, got nowhere with them. They were like, "We'll put that in the suggestion box," with a grinder on the front. And pretty much that. But I mean, I really feel bad, because I seem like nowadays, I am putting tons of plastic in the garbage that's gonna go to landfills. There must be some option or some, some way to follow up with them or something, with Walmart at least, or ShopRite, or somebody. I don't know, like, I need like some breakthroughs to follow a trail to figure this out. But it is, I feel terrible. I mean, I actually was like, I had two big empty bags full of plastic, you know, like, I'm like, well, I'll find it, I'll find a place to put them. But it's like, you know, we're talking about the Forkett River Mountain. Those people are polluting because they're idiots. I don't wanna pollute, you know what I mean? I'm trying not, I'm like, I have no alternatives. The one last thing I wanted to follow up on was that everybody was talking about the windmills, the wind farms last time. And I actually did a little more research into it and stuff like that. And I follow BBC News, and they're building a lot of them in England and stuff like that offshore. And the thing is, there's a lot of, the oil lobby is a very powerful lobby. It's like the tobacco lobby used to be. If you remember years ago, if you're old enough like I am, that doctors used to have advertisement, that's 10, nine out of 10 doctors recommend almond. And even the Flintstones cartoon, Fred and Barney were smoking butts. You know, little kids, 1961. And then everybody discovered how bad tobacco was. But the oil lobby is very powerful, and they, they really have gotten into like social media and everything that everybody is so convinced about, that, you know, the oil companies are still out there using Sonic blasting, very powerful cannons, and, you know, and it's sort of, it's strange, because we, we, the oil companies make billions in profits every month. We subsidize them with our taxes. And then they're, they're like, "Well, the wind farms are bad. Don't look at what we're doing, the wind farms are bad." And I, and I looking further into it even, I didn't even realize, you know, when it comes to, we talked about the cargo ships are now, after the pandemic, are crossing the ocean. They're making impacts with these animals and stuff. And, and also that these drift lines, I didn't even realize. I know, I know that there's mile-long drift, what they call drift lines, they're really drift nets. There are ones that the Japanese are using off, off of international waters that are 30 miles long. Imagine a line that is baited with tens of thousands of hooks. You know how long it would take to drive 30 miles? I mean, like, it's like going from here to Asbury Park. It would take you 40 minutes to just cover the distance of that one line, and stuff like that. But it's just, I just wanted to follow up on that, because I have been following, I have been like looking a lot into it. Because you know, there's a lot of things too, like these websites, like NOAA and NASA and stuff. But there's also websites that are like, "NOA this," which is not really the true website. It's like basically, you know, when I spoke last, at the last meeting, right, there was a young lady got up before me, I knew her. She was the opposite opinion of me. And I said to her, I go, "You're not gonna be mad at me now." "No, Jimmy, I can't be mad at you," you know, kind of thing. But then I went outside when the meeting was over, and there was a sizable fellow, about six foot five. "You better get your facts straight, pal." I go, "Oh, God," I guess I had to wait for him. And he didn't have, he didn't wanna bring his facts up to this microphone. He waited, have a private debate outside with me. He goes, "You better get your-" I'm like, "What, what facts?" He goes, "He goes, 'You even know how much oil is in one of those turbines?'" I go, "Yeah, 80 gallons," I looked it up. "No, it's not, it's 700,000 gallons." I'm like, "700,000 gallons in one telephone pole size, come on." It's like a, it's like half a cargo ship, or an oil freighter that carries that much, or a fleet of gas station tankers, you know. But it's, you know, and even the Mammal Stranding Center, when they said that, you know, NOAA said it's not the wind, not the wind farms causing these impacts on whales and dolphins and stuff. The mammals, they, they're, these are the people who rescue and get these beached animals and try and save them and stuff. They even said, "There's no evidence showing that it's the wind farms." They got death threats and stuff. I mean, nowadays, it seems like, if you don't agree with me, I gotta have to, I'm gonna have to beach it.
Jim, let me ask you a question. I don't mean to interrupt, you're going on, I'm trying to understand what you said. So far, you're bad-mouthing commercial fishing ships, 30 miles. You don't like wind farms, you don't like oil companies, you don't like fossil fuels, you don't like plastic bags. What's, what's the point?
I don't like plastic bags.
What's the point?
I don't like plastic bags in landfills.
We don't have-
But there's, on the plastic bags, it says, "Please recycle."
But look at, look at the, look at the inroads we've made. Look at the inroads this state has made. Everyone walks around with their, with their bags now. They walk in with them to Walmart and ShopRite, they come out, they're reusable. We've made a lot of progress.
That's progress, but it's not, there is a lot, much more involved. There's a lot more plastic than what's going in, you know, like, like I said, the reusable bags are very good. I sorted them myself growing up in Europe myself.
We're using them.
But I, it's not, I don't, I don't, I hate plastic bags. I don't hate them, but they, there should be a bag says this, "Please recycle this." I even called Crown Poly, who makes these bags in California. They're like, "Well, all we do is deliver them to the stores. It's up to them to do whatever they wanna do." But there should be some sort of, a little bit of an influence of saying, instead of seeing these, these bags floating all over parking lots everywhere. It's not that I hate bags. I hate bags killing animals and reed line, is what I hate. I hate them being, landfills being full of them. The other thing, I don't know, what was the other thing that I hated that you said or something?
With the commercial fishing, the oil companies, or something, I mean-
I'm for them. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to explain that there are lobbyists that spend millions of dollars to convince people of a certain fact that's not a fact, and that's what I was bringing up. I'm not, I'm not here bad-mouthing anything. I'm here to look for solutions, especially to the plastic bags.
Jim, I hear what you're saying. And let me just say that, doing my research on the stranded whales and so forth like that, I came across, the very first windmill, or wind farm, excuse me, was placed in the North Sea, 1992, 93, 91, somewhere in that area. And yes, they had a lot of problems with the species and stuff like that when they went in. Now, it's producing more fish than before the windmills went in, because it's kind of like a natural reef.
It forms a habitat.
Right, it forms a habitat. So, okay with that. But a lot of the things that you're talking about, if we had the power to fix it, I'm sure we would. But we don't have the power. It's most of the stuff that you, Seth, talked about, you know, down in Washington DC. And, you know, that's as dysfunctional as anything. And they're not gonna do a whole lot of that. They got enough problems without worrying about that. And, you know, Japanese fishermen, Japanese fishing, that's been a disaster for years.
I'm not bad-mouthing commercial fishermen either. I'm talking about in international waters where there's, the laws are, like I said, there's, how can you have a 30-mile-long line that has its baited, what, how is that legal? And it's not legal. It can't be legal and went into 12-mile limit, I don't think.
We have to plan it out to fish, I mean, we need fossil fuel, we need food from the ocean.
Until it runs out, and then we don't, we still need it, and it ain't there no more.
That's for another time.
Well, I'm just saying. But the thing with the, but that really did catch me though, because why in Howell and Hamilton is Walmart okay in doing it and not here? It's just, I mean, I don't know, I tried, I went to Wal, I called Walmart Corporate, I don't know how to go higher than that.
I'll see if I can get the number to the, get in touch with the manager over here.
Yeah, okay, great, that'll be great. Because it was a, I mean, it really was a hang thing.
We'll try to do something locally, but as far as corporate policy and so forth, obviously, we don't have-
But there is a missing link here, because like I said, they, these companies make these bags. They say, "Hey, recycle the bag," and then that's the end of it. But anyways, all right.
Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else in the public? Barry. Come on down here. Just your name, Barry.
Yeah, yeah. Can I name the general decision?
No.
You can do whatever you'd like.
No, I'm so good. Barry Bender. I know, I've discovered, and actually I was told ahead of time, the electric signs, there's something going on with electric signs, it's still running, it's from January.
Yes.
So I wanted to share.
We have a communication error.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, again, Relay for Life will be August 12. We're looking for teams, we're looking for people who are interested in working on the committee. That was gonna go out on the sign, but when they fix the sign, it'll go out. But we meet the first Monday of every month at the Recreation Building in Berkeley Township, and everyone is welcome to join us. And that's about the size of it.
Barry, do you have a Facebook page for this too?
Uh, there, there's a Facebook page up, I have to, I'll get the link to, I'll get it to you. I think Robin's working on the Facebook page. Just to clarify some of the discussion from before about the new municipal building. When we held, when you held, it was shortly after the election, you held the public meeting. There were people, other than Kevin, and Kevin, basically to give him his credit, is the person who brought it to many people's attention about anything to do with the new municipal building. But at that particular meeting, there were people, and it wasn't just Kevin, that had objections to-
But we have 30,000 people in this town.
Right, but the building was pretty full compared to committee meetings. It was pretty full. I just wanted to just clarify that.
But they don't come out otherwise, though, you know what I'm saying? They came out that one time. If you're really concerned with it, you'd be-
When you held the public hearing.
Right, but I'm saying, if people that are really concerned, they would come out every month and be asking questions, and really wanna know what's going on.
And the time when I come to meetings here, it's myself and Jimmy.
No, you're absolutely right.
That's my point, that's my point, Barry, that's my point.
What I'm saying is that you can't say that no one, because at that public hearing, there were people that were objecting, and it was more than just Kevin.
Right.
Okay?
You're right, but not all of them were objecting.
Right.
There were some people there that were for it.
Were for it.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, no, the majority of the people, the majority of the people that were there wanted to know about it, okay? There were some people who came out, were absolutely dead-set against it.